All right. Call this meeting to order at six oh one P M. Uh, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Pasqua is not present. Um, Councilmember Capaldi?
Here.
Councilmember Hull?
Here.
Councilmember Darwin?
Here.
Councilmember Mars?
Here.
Vice President Brown and?
Yeah.
President Verducci.
Here.
Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and endless justice for all.
In the event of an emergency, please head back out that way or through these two doors on this side and you'll exit out the two doors marked in back. All right, first on the agenda tonight, we have some meeting minutes. Um, let's see, we have open session minutes, September ninth, twenty twenty five. Uh, Madam Clerk, did you receive any edits or anything on these?
I did not.
All right. In that case, I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from September ninth, twenty twenty five, open session.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Darwin?
Abstain.
Councilmember Mars?
Abstain.
Vice President Brown?
Yes.
President Verducci?
Yes.
So we have four in the affirmative and two abstention. Motion passes.
Thank you. Uh, and it looks like we have two executive, uh, two sets of executive session minutes, July sixteenth and August twenty sixth.
Can I make a motion to take those as a block?
I think you can.
I'll make a motion to, uh, group together July sixteenth, twenty twenty five executive session along with August twenty sixth, twenty twenty five executive session meeting minutes.
I'll second it.
All right. Thank you very much. A first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Darwin?
Abstain.
Councilmember Mars?
Abstain.
Vice President Brown?
Yes.
President Verducci?
Yes.
Four in the affirmative, two abstention. Motion passes.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving on, we have public comment on docketed. Oh, what do we got tonight? Oh, sorry.
President, um, that was just the, the vote to take them as a block.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. You're right. Thanks for that.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Going so fast.
July sixteenth, twenty twenty five executive session along with August twenty sixth, twenty twenty five executive session meeting minutes.
I'll second.
Thank you very much. A first and a second. Any discussion? All right. Hearing none. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Darwin?
Abstain.
Councilmember Mars?
Abstain.
Vice President Brown?
Yes.
President Verducci?
Yes.
Four in the absten- four in the affirmative and two in the abstention. Motion passes.
Mr. President, I have a question.
Sure. Councilwoman Capaldi?
Um, why, um, our last meeting, we were able to do them all as a, um, eyes and nays. Can, can we start implementing that again? Or is there certain times we do that?
It, a good question. I know for, uh, the last time we asked, the solicitor had mentioned that, uh, we have to do roll call on executive, uh, executive session movements, but I think we can just do voice votes on, uh, minutes. So.
Yeah, that would be good. Thank you.
Absolutely. All right. Now at this time, we're moving along. Uh, item number two is public comment on docketed items. If anybody in the room, uh, has comments on docketed items, please step forward. All right. Uh, Mr. Marcus, anybody on Zoom? Wow. All right. Oh, there we go. Please unmute yourself. Come on in and, uh, state your name and address for the record.
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Sir.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go right ahead.
Steve Riley, Five Osprey Drive in Coventry. But tonight, uh, we have a docketed item here where the town manager is going to, uh, update and discuss, uh, on the audit of the former Solicitor Angel's invoices. And we learned, uh, at the last council meeting that, uh, Mr. Angel was still counseling the town's redevelopment agency. And in fact, uh, it turns out that he has a contract with the R D A, uh, substantially similar to that, uh, which he had with the town. And I, I guess if it isn't being considered yet, uh, I would like, uh, given the financial and legal issues that the town faces over, over this situation and what we've, uh, lived through this in two thousand twenty five, I'd like to suggest that the, uh, town audit, the R D A's legal expenses at the same time. And that's it.
Sure. Um, Councilman Hull?
Not sure if I should even. Do we actually have a contract? Is, is it okay to ask that question now? Because I, I've yet to see a signed contract between the law office of Stephen Angel and R D A. I have seen a contract, but not an executed contract.
I, I, do we have an answer?
Uh, can I chime in?
Do not have a signed, executed one. Correct. Okay.
I have a question.
Sure. Councilwoman Capaldi?
I would like to ask our solicitor tonight, um, how can a, how can they be working for over a year without a signed contract?
Are you referring to the development agency?
R D A has a contract with Steve Angel. Well, it's not signed. And we do know, and I'm speaking on behalf of the town, we do not want Steve Angel involved with the town anymore.
Well, I believe Mr. Larson has signed it. We just don't have a copy of it. That's my, the knowledge that I've been given is that there is a signed contract. Mr. Larson did sign it. We just do not have it.
I was told there was no signature.
Okay. If I may interject, um, assuming that to be true, that would not necessarily render the services he performed or the, or the fair value of the services he, he performed null and void necessarily. We would be getting into a, um, relatively complex area of contract law. So the question would be, is he still entitled to be paid in quantum merit, meaning the value of his services, maybe not necessarily what he contracted for. I think that's probably the best case scenario. I don't believe the mere fact that there weren't signatures on the contract in and of itself is going to avoid all of his, uh, legal services or entitlement to some compensation, I guess is what I'm saying.
Councilwoman?
Without, um, talking too much about this, so we're not getting in trouble for anything, I just want to ask a question. And I know I wasn't at this meeting. I was able to listen but not talk, I believe. Um, and if anyone knows me, you know, that's really hard to do. But, um, are we able, what are we doing with, is there a meeting set for R D A and us to discuss what we're doing? Because I, I've been doing a lot of research and I really want to talk about this. Not now, but do we have this on the docket for?
December second, Mr. Brennan's coming in.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilman Hull?
One last point, and I don't need an answer because I don't want to get in trouble for this, but I want to ensure that I, I feel like a contract, if it was duly executed by all parties, privy to the contract, would be fairly easy to furnish, whether that be from Mr. Larson or it be requested from Mr. Angel. I just want to ensure that on a town side, we have asked those parties in writing for that contract. Because to me, it's beneficial if there isn't one.
So I have asked Mr. Brennan to get the contract from the former solicitor and he is making a, a, opportunities to, he's making an opportunity to get that from him. Uh, Mr. Angel was unavailable last week. Um, so I know Mr. Brennan is trying to get that contract. I can follow up with him tomorrow to see where that stands.
But isn't it ridiculous if he's going to sign it now?
If who's going to sign it now? Mr. Larson?
Mr. Angel is going to sign it now?
The copy that we have, he's already has his signature on.
He does, but it's just not the chair of the R D A?
Correct.
Yeah, just to catch up some of the other members here, we had a, a change in leadership on the R D A. And, you know, I find it a little, you know, ridiculous to imagine that we'd have a signed contract that we couldn't put our hands on from either party. But that's actually what we're talking about right now. So, uh, sounds like, uh, staff's in the process of, of trying to get that, uh, if not from R D A, from Angel Law. Um, that's just kind of where we're at right now to fill everybody in. Um, anyone else on? Did you have something? Councilman Hull?
I, I think I would just want to clarify what Councilwoman Capaldi is concerned about. If, and correct me if I'm wrong, what would stop R D A from executing that previous contract now? I think that's what somebody, we probably shouldn't be discussing this, but I'll follow up in an email and then we can talk about it with R D A. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you very much. Yeah, valid stuff. And, uh, as the manager said, we, a couple more weeks, uh, we'll have them in and have a more fruitful discussion, get some updates and, uh, you know, we won't have to worry about violating, uh, anything with that. Um, thank you, Mr. Riley. Um, as you can see, you brought up, uh, an interesting topic. So appreciate you chiming in. Anyone else on public comment? I'll check again here in the room. Got one taker? Comment on docketed items. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Scott Guthrie, thirty one Maplewood Drive. I had asked about this, uh, a while ago, uh, through the clerk's office. Does the town solicitor, excuse me, the town manager have to sign off on, on, um, communications that go to the clerk's office? Because I saw something that looked like it didn't have a signature on it. I compared two signatures. You have to sign off on anything like that?
I don't know what you're referring to, Mr. Guthrie. Sign off on an email or sign off on what kind of document?
Well, it was, it had to do with that contract. And I have a copy of your signature on, on one piece of paper. And I have a copy of your signature that has to deal with that contract. And they don't look alike. They don't look alike.
Okay.
So, you know, I'm, I'm concerned, um, is, is it a normal practice for the town manager to say, okay, I'm going to sign this off and send it to the clerk. And this is going to be this and this is going to be that. I have a copy of your signature on two different documents. One of them is a legitimate document for the town where you sign it. And one of them has to do with the R D A contract, which do not match up. So I don't know if you were away that time and somebody signed it for you. I don't know. I have the copies. So my question is, is do you have to sign things off to send them to the clerk's office?
I sign for every director, not just the clerk.
Okay. So.
Councilwoman Capaldi?
Mr. Guthrie, can we see those?
I'll provide them to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh. We're still on this topic or can I talk?
Uh, docketed. We're on, docketed items.
Docketed? Okay. Wait.
All right. Anyone else in the room? If not, uh, anyone on Zoom who has a comment on docketed items, please raise your hand to be let in. All right. Thank you very much. That concludes public comment on docketed items. Moving along. Uh, next item on the agenda, we have election and appointment of town officials. First up, town council appointments. We have, uh, library board of trustees with a vacancy and Coventry Land Trust with a vacancy. Are either of the, the folks listed here, uh, here tonight? All right. Whoever wants to come down first, please come on down and tell us a little bit, uh, about yourself and why you're interested. And before we get started, thank you very much for volunteering and participating.
Uh, good evening and thank you for your time tonight. Uh, my name's Aaron Kootu. Um, I've, I live at, uh, two Pinoc Court. Um, and I've been a librarian for more years than I'll admit at this point. Um, I know you've had a chance to see, uh, my resume in your packet, um, but just some quick highlights. Um, I currently serve on the library board of Rhode Island, which is a state board that oversees, uh, the state office of library and information services. Um, I, uh, served for sixteen years as an adjunct, a library instructor at the graduate school at U R I. Um, and then, um, I've been in, in library administration at a few different libraries. Um, but what makes me interested in, in serving here, um, is I had had experience when I lived in Barville, serving on the board of one of their libraries there. Um, but, um, I grew up here. Um, I started with storytime in the children's room when they still had the jungle on the wall. Um, I got to see actual real, um, reel to reel movies, um, during parts of storytime. Um, so I've seen the library, um, and used it through high school, um, and seen how it's, um, been a part of this town. And I was raised by my family to give back to the communities in which I live. Um, and this really is my biggest expertise area. So, uh, for me, it's natural to want to participate, to try to use that expertise to help the library be the best that it can. It already has a great team. Um, it's got great leadership, but, um, I think I would, um, really enjoy being a part of that and helping, um, as much as I can.
Thank you very much for that. Uh, thank you for everything you've done in the past. Tremendous resume. Uh, everything you, you've shown us here tonight is, is really remarkable. So first and foremost, for anybody who likes to participate, thank you, but, uh, very outstanding stuff. Um, comments, questions?
Just, I think we're lucky to have you, you know, just with your experience in the past. And, uh, thank you. Thank you for volunteering.
Vice President Brown?
Yeah. Uh, stellar resume. I mean, Coventry resident, everything goes along with that job and I, I appreciate it. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Aaron Kootu to the library trust.
I'll second. We have a nomination in a second. Any discussion? Anybody else want to beat anybody to the punch on anything? Okay. Hearing none. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations and thank you again. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, very good. That takes care of the library. Uh, we've also got one. Uh, next item, Coventry Land Trust vacancy. Oh, come on up. Hello, sir. Please introduce yourself and, uh.
Uh, hello, Reed degrade eight ninety one Whaley Hollow Road. Uh, my interest in Coventry Land Trust is I utilize a lot of what they offer. I live close to a lot of the hiking trails that they, that they maintain and just, it's just something that I wanted to try and give back to the community, whatever it's, if it's trail maintenance, if it's cutting down, uh, down trees, helping maintain the trails. I've been going to the meetings, the, the past couple, past couple of months and just trying to learn the other aspects of the land trust, whether it's the, the, getting the property donated or buying property that, that's going to be used for the town, you know, for other generations to, to enjoy the nature and, and hiking and wildlife that's out there. But, but that's why I'm interested in joining the land trust.
Outstanding. So do you have your own tools? You do, you do maintenance and everything?
Yeah.
Do we know the stand? We can, we'll just grab this guy. All right.
Yeah, I, I live near the, the Bowden hiking trail and, uh, Stella Hall one. So it's just.
Wow.
It's just easy. If there's, if there's any issues, just say, just say, can you take care of this? A walk right down.
Oh, wow. I can't. I mean, fun. Fantastic. No, sincerely, thank you very much. That's, that's really great. Councilwoman Capaldi?
Just curious, what do you do for your day job?
Uh, I work at Electric Boat Detail Planning.
When, did you graduate from Coventry High?
Yes, two thousand and four.
They didn't have that program yet though, I don't believe.
No, I wasn't there yet.
Yeah, it's a really, really amazing program they have there now. They go right to.
It's one of those things I wish I did right out of high school.
Great. Well, thank you so much for, um, stepping up because this is really cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Do we?
Thank you again. I appreciate you coming forward and helping. Um, I think, you know, the land trust is something that a lot of people don't know about. And, you know, our bike paths and our open spaces is important. You know, we get tied up in the minutiae of, you know, resolutions and spending money and budgeting. Uh, but those basic things is I think what keeps people enjoying. We don't even see all the people that enjoy it.
Yep.
Uh, so with that, I'll make a motion to approve. Um, I don't want to say your name wrong. Is it Reed?
Yep.
Degraded?
Yep.
I will make a motion to approve Reed degrade to the Coventry Land Trust.
Motion from Councilman Hull.
I'll second that motion.
Second from Councilwoman Capaldi. Any discussion? Thank you very much. Um, I think we'll, we'll see what happens. What do you think? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Right. Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you. All right. Next up on the agenda, item number four, we have town manager Perillo, uh, with a couple of updates for us.
So I'll start with the solicitors, former solicitors invoices. Uh, just so you know, I do have the ones that the council, uh, passed a resolution for. I got those this morning. So I do have those. I don't know how much you want to get into this tonight. Uh, C L A will be presenting on Friday night. We'll be here to, uh, differentiate those two options that I provided to you and answer any questions that you may have. So I don't know if you want to go get into it tonight or we can wait till Friday. It's up to you.
I believe Councilwoman's hobbled hand was.
I don't like sitting this far away from you.
No, that's quite all right.
Um, two questions for, unless I do two now, two. It looks like gang signs. I'm sorry. Two questions. Um, when are we getting those, um, invoices? Cause you got them this morning.
I got this morning. I was giving this morning. Correct.
Have we have, do we have them?
No.
Why don't we have them?
I had a lot on my plate today. Unfortunately, I didn't have the opportunity to work with Cody to get them off the thumb drive onto the file to send to you. So I can send them to you tomorrow morning.
That'd be great. Thank you. And second, um, I don't think we'd have enough time. There's going to be a lot of conversation with C L A on Friday. And I know we're trying to squeeze a lot in to one hour because I believe there's somebody else coming in here after the council meeting. I suggest that whoever's coming in, I think it may be the library?
They got, that got canceled. So we'll, we have it until six thirty.
Okay.
Or later. I mean.
Okay. It's like, we like, whatever time we have. Okay.
C L A has a deadline of six thirty, just to let you know.
Um, can I make a motion? I think I can make a motion here that I think that the priority always goes to the town council here in the chambers. And if there's other meetings, we have a beautiful annex across the street. Um, they can find other places, but I think, you know, we're always having to scurry and try to find time where the council can meet to discuss really important stuff and to have to, um, you know, fly through it because this, the, the library or some other commission needs to come in to hear, I don't think is right. Um, I would, can I make a motion or what, how are we doing this to make this?
I can just explain the process. Um, so we have our calendar for the year. We put our calendar out there first and then planning commission, zoning board, library fills in whatever's left over. Um, so anytime there's a special meeting, um, where not at their whim, but we try to make accommodations. Like even, like even tonight, like municipal court was in here tonight. We bumped them out to the hallway. So when, when we have a special meeting off our regular nights, we just try to make it work. So hope everyone's flexible.
Well, like again, I'm going to state this. I'd like to hear what my colleagues say. I think that the town issues, granted, I sit on the council, but we're dealing with a lot of stuff right now. I don't think we should run through because we can get a, 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 one hour on a Friday for things that were not on this agenda and that are important to the public. Um, granted, I didn't know that somebody canceled out on that other meeting, but I think we have the annex. We have a whole bunch of meeting rooms in there. Why don't they just?
Not yet. It'll be done in January.
Didn't you guys just have meetings there the other day?
The annex? Well, there's, the zoning board met there and the land trust meets there. They meet in Doug's office. That's, that's the area they meet in.
All right. Well, we could talk about this offline, but I think that council should get priority here to talk about the town, towns meetings and commissions and everyone else. If we need a special meeting, we get this and they have to move somewhere else.
Thank you very much. Uh, I think we need, you know, like a backup space that's just kind of ready, uh, swing space for whatever entity needs it where we can maybe easily do the, the A V part. But I know Cody, if he's watching, is, is raising his hand right now because I know it's not easy. I know he has to physically move a lot of stuff. So, but I agree with the sentiment in general. I don't want to short, shorten our time.
Somebody else move stuff. That's the thing.
Yeah.
Just another question to that, but legally forty eight hours before your meeting, they got to post their meetings. So if they're moving, does that become a problem for them? Joanne's going like this. So.
Well, I don't think, their, their issue is not really posting meetings. It's more they, they, they hire contractors to come in and run programs. So if we tell them you're out of our space, they're, they have nowhere to go and they have a contractor coming in. So I think in January, this won't be a problem. Once we have the thirty eight thousand square feet done next door, it won't be a problem.
Uh, oh, Councilman Hull?
Uh, this would be more for, um, my colleagues up here in regards to the C L A audit. Um, I think it would be important for us as council members to maybe email over the town manager any questions that we have for C L A. Because we are now, I don't even know how many weeks after we've already resolved this, that I would hate for C L A to get in front of us and not be able to streamline a process because they don't have the answers to our questions. And then it would be like another follow-up. So I think if, if we have, you know, on, on a time crunch for Friday, I don't want to see this pushed out. I want to resolve it. Um, uh, cause it's still literally, we're just kicking this down and kicking it down and kicking it down. Like, let's just get these invoices handled.
We just need the invoices first and we don't have them yet. So I think once.
We do have them.
We don't have them.
Yeah, you've only, you, you only have the first two years so far. I sent you the first two years.
Yeah, but those real, we don't need to go into this again because we already stated this last meeting. Those are kind of irrelevant to this, well, from Frank, uh, Councilman Brown to us, because no one was. Cause no one was on the council, those first two batches you gave us. We're looking for the last eight, which I know we just got. And we're waiting with bated breath to review them. So we'll get them tomorrow morning. Great.
Yeah. So just to decision the council can make. Do you want CLA to look at the first two years? Cause if you say no to the first two years, that'll cut back on a number a lot.
We wouldn't know what is wrong or not wrong on those first two years, but President, what do you think?
So that's going to be part of, uh, what the actual discussion is going to be with them because, uh, you know, this is all topical. So I think we're good to discuss it. The, the point of I think Fridays is going to be more for us to understand the distinction between the two um, types of audits or levels of detail. So, you know, that, that's probably a, a good question for that because um, it, it may be that if they, they have the entire pile, um, you know, they, they may know better what they're looking for versus what we do. And maybe that establishes something. I don't know. But, uh, you know, I think as far as more relevant to us will come into play when we actually have an interaction with them to voice, you know, more direct concerns. But I think tomorrow's, I'm sorry, Friday's is more about which option are we picking? So if we have questions about that, that's probably a good idea to get handled ahead of time, like, uh, Councilman Hull was saying.
I just want to state, um, I really want to know what CLA brings to the table that a layperson can't do because they're spending a lot of money. I'll ask them to their faces when they're here. But if they're just going to go, here's the invoices and here's his contract and they're just trying to rectify what was maybe duplicated or whatever. I mean, anyone could do that. So why are we spending forty thousand or the second level seventy thousand? I really would just like to know what they're bringing to the table that we would be spending all this money on.
Totally agree. Um, and then that's all we have. We, we, we have the invoices and we have his contract. We don't have anything else for them to compare it to or anything like that. Good point.
So we should definitely talk about this on Friday and if, if you, you, maybe we talk about it now before we get them in here. Cause I believe they charge you when they come into these meetings.
They're going to be on Zoom.
But they're still charging for their time. So maybe we should look at this and because to me, I'll do it for nothing. I'm sure our, uh, Mr. Sveti can do it too. I'm not trying to put any, I'm sorry, uh, Director of Finance. I, I'm not trying to give you more work, but I'm just saying, really, what do they bring to the table? A magic wand to try to figure out what's going on because it's a lot of money.
Do, do we have a, uh?
An auditing and forensic department of CLA. This is what they, this is all they do is.
But I think something like what they do and all they do is in different situations, not just here's a contract and here's how he charged. We only have those two bits of information and anybody that is intelligent can go through those and make a cohesive list of, you know what? That was included, that should have been included in the nine thousand dollar a month fee. But he's also adding, charging over here too. So he's double doing it. Or there's a lot of instances and you know, I'm not going to go into that, but there's instances that he charged for stuff that he didn't do. Anybody can do that and you don't need to spend the amount of money, but.
Good point. I agree.
Yeah. No, that's a, do we have a written scope or, uh, with the, with that quote?
I sent it to the council. The two quotes and he'll, he'll, he'll explain those two different.
Okay. Yeah.
Categories. Yep.
Yep.
And you know what? I don't think they should be charging. They're trying to get our business. Why are they charging when they're coming in here and pitching their work? They should not be charging us for that time.
I don't, I don't understand what you mean. I, I reached out to them. They didn't reach out to us.
No, but they're coming and they're sitting on Zoom. I believe they charge for that time. Are they not?
I don't know. I've, I've already had three Zoom calls with them on this and they haven't charged us. So I can't think.
Just confirm.
Be like a proposal, like anyone's.
Yeah. I mean, they've been on orders for five years. They've done a great job for us. I don't think they're looking to nickel and dime the town in any capacity.
We should confirm that just in case.
I think some of the benefit of having an audit and firm do it versus a layman person do it is they know what they're looking for or they know certain quirks that we may not catch or pick up, but we'll.
Think it's, we can go further, but I, I, it's black or white. You got the contract. You got what he charged. How, how wrong can you go? My thoughts.
Thank you very much. Uh, I would definitely encourage everyone to, um, get caught up to speed. Have we sent, uh, the two options to our, our new members?
I believe they have.
Okay. Um, so, you know, take a look at those. Basically we're trying to, trying to look at the scope of that. And, um, you know, is, is the juice worth the squeeze, so to speak, on going through those? And then if we decide to move forward, which are the two options? So, um, good questions, good points that we've made tonight. Uh, you know, certainly one of the things we have to look at is, you know, what is the, uh, the magnitude of the difference in the spend going to get you, uh, in the work product? So, uh, I think that was some of the things Councilwoman Capaldi was bringing up. But if you have specific questions, sooner the better, um, and we can get them over to CLA and hopefully condense some of that time, um, on Friday. Good on that.
So regarding Station Street, I know it came up last meeting. I did send the entire council, the, uh, study that par engineering did on November fifth. I just sent, we sent it to all of you now. So at the, at the top of your emails. Um, so regarding Station Street, we know there's a flooding issue for that resident that lives in the lower part of Station Street, lives two sixty-nine. So the council authorized thirty-two thousand dollars to spend for the study. Pair Engineering conducted the study. Uh, the results were that we did need to add, uh, some pipes in the roadway in order to alleviate some of that stormwater. Um, Joe Levex here, he can definitely speak better to it than I can. But the proposal they provided us was for a twelve inch pipe to run down Station Street at a cost of, I think it was three hundred and three thousand. Um, Joe thinks that that might not be sufficient enough to curtail the problem. So I'll let him speak to that. If you guys want any questions answered.
I'd like to say something first because I know we've been talking about this for a while now. Um, and I do not mean to make this the Councilwoman Capaldi show. I apologize for talking a lot today, but you, the town stated this was their fault. Why are we not fixing it?
May I ask who said it's our fault?
I remember and we can pull up the video. I said, who's, you got the, the construction up on the hill and then it comes down and basically I believe you stated it was the town's fault. It's not the man's fault who has to, um, or, or the people, there's several people that live at the bottom of that basin.
He's, he's the only one affected.
There's two houses on the other side that do get flooded too.
Okay.
But, um, his house gets really flooded that he can put a motorboat in his yard and go around.
Totally agree. It's been going on, I think 12 to 14 years, I believe.
We need to fix this. You can't just say it's too much money. See you later, bye. Just keep using your motorboat in your backyard.
I know the town, I know the town has replaced his driveway at, at one time. We've put berms up.
Because it was broken because of the water of the issues of the contractor in the town. It's not the man's fault.
I'm not saying it is the man's fault, Councilwoman.
Shouldn't we fix it?
That's up to the council if they want to spend that, spend that money.
Can we go out to bid for other people to see if we can get something less expensive?
Councilwoman, can we get, can we get the story first? I think we got some new people. Maybe that'll help.
Okay.
But we've worked so many times. This is just an engineer's estimate. It hasn't gone out to bid. It could come in higher than three hundred and three thousand. But just keep in mind that the proposal carries a twelve inch, uh, RCP pipe. Um, there's still going to be ponding. It, it's not, it, it's not going to be a home run like you're thinking. Uh, a twenty-four inch solution would drastically reduce the ponding time. Um, there still would be upwards of, if we went with a twenty-four inch, there still would be upwards of, um, one hour of, uh, drawdown time before the, the road is clear. And that's with a twenty-four. It could be, uh, upwards of three hours with the twelve inch solution. Um, we have limitations. So there is, uh, existing infrastructure down at the intersection of Highland and Station. That's where we would tie into roughly five hundred and fifty-five feet of pipe from the area to that intersection. Um, the infrastructure downstream of that intersection, uh, has limitations. So we're also dealing with that, you know, in a perfect world, you would upgrade that too, to handle that flow coming. Cause remember we're, we're taking now in that downstream section, we're going to take the existing flow plus the new flow. So it's going to slow it down. Um, so worst case scenario, we're looking at roughly six hundred thousand. Best case, if you can live with some ponding, um, during, you know, increased storm events, like up to a twenty-five year and, and higher. Um, it would be three hundred thousand. Um, it, it's, you know, it's a lot of money and I, I just don't know, uh, you know, if the town has the capacity to fund the project of this size.
Mr. Levick, who's at fault?
I, I never stated that the town has.
I'm asking you, who's at fault?
There, there is a, a contributing, uh, amount of, uh, water here. It's a, it's a fourteen point four acre watershed. Um, over two acres of that is, uh, non-pervious. So we have, we have water coming not only down the street, but from all the neighboring properties. Um, I, I can't say who's at fault.
Those contractors, I don't, I believe that it doesn't, didn't flood until those new homes were, were, were built there.
I can't speak to that. Um, I don't have the, the history.
That's what the, that's what the homeowner told me. I don't know. He's not in.
Yeah, I, I haven't been involved. Uh.
So did the, we don't know if the contractor did anything wrong to make this happen? Cause I believe they're not pitched correctly, the driveways.
There was, so there was a basin that was supposed to be constructed, uh, upstream of this property. Um, that wasn't, so there, there were water issues, but there is a new development that was built. Um, up, up the street from this property that handled the flow of that basin that never got built. So I believe that now that it is a better condition of what it was before that development was built. Um, but is it perfect? No, by, by no means.
Thank you.
So, um, understand your point there and understand kind of what you're saying too. So in situations like this, when there's no, you know, straightforward solution that isn't a burden. You know, do you, does the, you look for those people to, uh, move eventually? Does anything get condemned? Is it, is it habitable? How does that look big picture wise?
So, you know, that there are alternatives and I've spoke to the town manager about it and the assistant town manager. There are, um, some FEMA grants. They'll fund a portion of the, uh, you know, uh, some sort of a buyback from the homeowner. Um, you know, the one that the assistant town manager was looking into was like a seventy-five, twenty-five split. Twenty-five would be the town. Um, I believe she's looking into the feasibility of that. And if there, uh, if we qualify for something like that with this, uh, circumstance, um, so that's TBD. Um, so, you know, it, we're not ignoring the situation. It's just unfortunately it, it's such a huge price, price tag. It's not just something that, you know, um, it, it's something that would have to be programmed. It definitely years out to be able.
Do any of the grant, can, can any of these grants help with the cost of fixing it? Other than grants to help the man move?
That would, yeah, that would, that would have to be a separate grant. Maybe a lot of the grants nowadays are tied to affordable housing. Um, it, it would have to be something that came along where there was a pot of money put aside, maybe just for stormwater. Um, but I haven't seen anything, um, like that, that we could apply here. Um, the other one I spoke about was a FEMA grant.
Yeah. My, my last conversation with the homeowner, maybe six or nine months ago was he would be willing to sell the property to the town. Um, he said he wanted six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for it. And I told him that wasn't feasible for us to take that on. So.
Just to give everyone a sense here, that's, uh, the magnitude of that is bigger than our whole capital budget for the year. You know, just to give you an idea of what one of those would look like, but, uh, understanding that this is government and it's often satisfying. Uh, this, this one's tough. Uh, understand everybody's frustrations. Go ahead, Councilman Hull.
I, I think when we see projects that are this large for the dollar wise, I wonder why 14 years ago, there wasn't a plan, you know, none of us can answer that. We weren't here. But moving forward, we know this is an issue. So tomorrow, there should be a plan to put money away from tomorrow to year three or year four, where we can accomplish the goal instead of it just when there's an seven other people up here and, you know, we're having the discussion again. Or this guy sues us for some line. Now we're in litigation and, and then at the same time to spend three to six hundred thousand dollars to put a pipe in, I'd, if the guy wants to move, it'd be better off buying his house and keeping that as a basin. Keep that as a catchfall, you know, catchall. Um, so I'd, rather than pay for the pipe, I'd rather, I don't want to see the guy, you know, if he's willing and wants to, wants to leave, it'd be better off to sell the house and keep that as open space for water retention. Um, but I, we have a, moving forward, because this water issue, this water retention and flooding is going to become more prevalent, especially in D four with Arnold Road and that Tiffany, potential Tiffany Road. There's a lot of dense population right there that we're clearing. Not, not we personally, but that issue, I hope that our processes for water retention and for runoff are really strong right now because we have a lot of that coming. Um, so I think something to keep in the back of the mind when we start seeing these permits for this, like, maybe we've got to address our buffers. I don't know, but it seems like everything is happening, you know, right in this one little, you know, eighth of a, you know, quarter of a mile radius. Um, and how much more can you clear? Look at that Tiffany one. It's coming down Ty Oak. Like everyone's going to get flooded over there. It's like, how do these things even come to fruition when nobody's looking downhill? You just look at the top, then with the topography of it.
And a lot of the stormwater permits and so forth go through DEM.
Yeah, it's a lot. Some of it's out of our hands, but it's almost like, can we apply a three dollar, you know, license fee to somewhere? So we have some control. It's not about the, even if it's a dollar for the fee, it's not about the money. It's about the process of ensuring that where these things are going, because once it gets to DM, it's out of our hands on a state level.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Anyone else? We good? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right. That's it for our town manager report. Moving right along. Uh, we have resolutions, uh, section five of the agenda. We have resolution twenty-five, one sixteen. This is a tax assessor addition and abas, abatements for September third through November third. Is anyone coming up on that? All right. Hello. Hello. Good evening. Tell us all about yourself and why you want to. Oh, wow. This is. Yeah. Tell us why you want to work here.
So we have abatements in the dates that were mentioned of eighty-seven, seventy-five, eight thousand, seven hundred, seventy-five. And we have additions in the amount of thirty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Right for the benefit of us people up here, do you want to just do a quick run through of what those categories mean and, and what the impact is as far as what we're going to vote on for that?
Okay. So the abatements are for.
Is your microphone on?
Yeah, I'm just not talking in it. Um, so abatements are for tax assessor appeals that I granted. Um, missed exemptions, the office missed, you know, things like that. So that's giving money back. The prorates and supplementals are, um, prorates are when a new construction is finished after the first of the year. So on twelve thirty-one, we bill for the construction that is physically there at the time, whether it's fifty percent, ninety percent complete. Once it's CO'd, then we prorate for the rest of the year from the prorate date, from the CO date, sorry, to twelve thirty-one. So that's, that's getting the rest of those taxes to the end of the year. And supplements are when either a property owner has any personal exemption and they pass or the property is sold. We have to supplement the new owner for the rest of the year for that loss because it was not their personal exemption. So does that answer your question?
Oh, I, I knew all. Oh, I knew all that stuff. I was just making sure these guys did. Yeah, no, that's, that's helpful. You know, we all know some of this stuff, but to hear it, you know, put that way, that it makes a lot more sense. And then makes what we're trying to do up here, you know, make a little more sense for us. So no, I really appreciate it. I don't know if I gotcha.
I understand.
Yeah, no, we, we need that kind of stuff every once in a while.
It's not the first time.
Did you have something? Councilman Hall?
That was a great explanation. Thank you. One of the questions that I have is when you talked about COs or new construction, do some of these additions, like if somebody comes and takes a permit out for a shed or something to that effect, where it changes the potential property values, is that what this would get added in? Or would that only change when it gets reassessed?
Construction.
So only new.
It's new construction. Yes.
Do we as a town think maybe, you know, again, nevermind, because I'd be taxing people more. Nevermind, disregard.
Okay. Okay. You're welcome. Any other questions?
Anyone else on this one? All right. Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Okay. You're welcome.
And that explanation, like some, you have no, I had to Google this when I first started because I had no idea what these additions, subtractions and prorations and how they start and what they're caused from. So thank you. Like I hope you guys, that helped because those explanations, like you guys do this day in and day out. We don't.
No, I understand.
So we see this and it's like, okay, let me get Google out or ask chat what this means.
Get chat to say that.
I'll make a move, a motion to approve resolution 2025116, tax assessor abatements and additions.
Of a motion from Vice President Brown. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Sticking with great topics, we have sewer connection coming up. Oh, we have a question? Is anyone coming up for that? Oh, you're coming up. All right. You can give her a sec. Come back. Do we know if she's coming back?
I can wait.
Okay.
I have a question on a deadline. There's a, for Ramblewood Estates, there's a connection deadline where if they don't connect by 1231 of 25, I'd like to know what happens to that fee is what I was kind of figuring out and I would, maybe that was her department. I'm not.
No, that, that was.
That's you?
Yeah, that was my application.
Nice.
Yeah. So in the past, we've had unlimited extensions or an unlimited timeframe on permit applications. And what it does is it really trips up the town when we have someone else who wants to tie into, say, a pump, a pump station that we've already approved an allocation for. And then we have to tell when the project's kind of on hold, but they keep renewing their permit with planning. But the sewer approval is ongoing, so it could be 10 years and it's just holding that capacity. Whereas if they're serious, they will renew that application with a new application review and fee. Though. Now, just, just for reference, sorry to interrupt, West Warwick has a one year policy where you have to renew after one year.
And how long is our policy?
Two. I mean, it's two years.
Generous.
And that's just to start. It's not, I'm not looking for them to complete it, but I want, I want them to show intent that they are going to move forward with the project and at least start it, that, that was intent.
In, in the letter, it states that if they don't connect from 1231 of 25, that there is going to be a fee that's calculated for the 2024, if I remember correctly, right? So it says if the buildings are connected by December 31 of 25, the CPI will be based on December 31 of 24. Each mobile home will incur, you know, assessments.
Okay. So you were right. So that, that is finance that it's kind of similar to my comment. But yes, that would be for the, the finance director, that comment.
And it wouldn't affect any of our decisions tonight, correct? This would just affect the fee of which the assessment would be?
I can't answer that question.
The tax, the tax collector assigns that fee based on the charter for each, to, each line has a different formula to tie in.
Yep.
So yes, your, your approval will just move, moving forward will just change that amount.
And it would never drop? That fee would only increase potentially?
That I don't know. I don't know if it goes up or down based on what's in the contract, what's in the charter. But it wouldn't affect the approval. I think you're not, you're not approving the actual number of dollars coming in. You're approving their ability to tie in and that's the cost for them to tie in.
But if we're approving a tie-in, the tie-in is connected to the dollars. So if we don't know the dollars, why, how do we approve something we don't know the dollar amount on? Is there any, am I missing something? Right? So, so we have to approve a connection for Ramblewood, which has assessments and it's going to cost a total of $1,940,039.30. I'm assuming that that cost will be divvied up from the assessments that Ramblewood and the private trailer owners would pay, correct? What I'm trying to figure out is what cost is the town going to eat on this? Or is, is Ramblewood Estates going to, they're taking all this 1.9?
Yeah, how they cost us anything, Joe, does it?
No, it doesn't. No.
No cost to the town.
No.
And that 1.9, where does that money go? When, when these assessments come in, do they just go in general fund? Where do they go? Thank you. And who is responsible for the private line?
The applicant.
And overseen by you or in the town?
No. Well, we, we will have inspection, even though it is private.
So you will oversee it?
Yes.
Okay.
But ultimately it will be the responsibility of the applicant. It'll, they'll own it. It won't be public infrastructure at the end.
Now, we know that this, we have some issues currently in town with private sewer lines. Is there anything in the, in the future that that private line tied into a municipal line would cause any liability? Or is there an agreement in place where if they connect and something happens on their private line, we're not liable for this?
Yeah, I would have to look at the language to say how it's, it's common practice that private infrastructure ties into municipally owned infrastructure. So I would, I would have to research exactly what the ramifications were if, if there was an issue.
We do have some in place?
I would have to look at the, the sewer code to see how it speaks to that. If it does.
It's not unusual to have that.
No, no, a lot of things in town aren't unusual, but it, it's just like, let's, if, if we're allowing, usually if, if you're going to use someone's facility or you're going to use someone's, you know, you go rent something, you, you sign a hold harmless, you sign something. Is, is there something in place where Ramblewood Estates, if their private line crushes or contaminates us, or they drop something from that laundry area that's going, anybody, take Ramblewood out of it. Anyone that we're allowing to tie in, I just, I, I would want to ensure that we don't have any liability. We have enough litigation.
Right, right.
And I think while we're there, I would want to ensure that the engineer and our DPW is ensuring that the pitch is correct and that. We don't, we don't, don't want any foreseeable problems.
Understood.
And, and I just go back, I don't think we have an answer on the calculations for the CPI if it doesn't connect by 2025.
Yeah, I would, I would have to follow up with the tax assessor on that. If you want to continue it till Friday, get your answer for Friday.
There's no difference, correct? Like is it, is it changing the town's bottom? I don't want to approve this. If there's, if the money can change our bottom line, like can this, we're approving all 1.94. That's going to basically be payable to the town. If that number drops to $800,000, like does anyone, like what do we do?
But the resolution itself is not, doesn't even have the dollar value as part of the resolution. You're just, you're just approving the tie-in. It's not really tied to the resolution itself. I know what you're saying.
You gave me a document though, that backed up that resolution.
Correct.
Yeah.
And I'm just reading the document you provided. No, I totally agree.
But I can.
So then why is that document in there? Just confusing me? No, it's backup information to tell you what that connection that you're approving is valued at.
Hi, my name is Michelle Hawes. I represent Maplewood, Ramblewood Corporation.
Hi, Michelle.
For this application.
Are you?
Very good. Thank you. My, my understanding is that the letter is just in there for informational purposes for the applicant. We are seeking the approval here of the tie-in as the town manager has stated. The actual fee to be assessed will be informational from the town. So we have no, like other than, we know that our obligation is that if we are not doing so within two years, then we need to seek reapproval. But other than that, we have no control over what the town.
Over the dollar amount.
Be assessing.
Correct.
So that would be.
So negative is what you're trying to point out?
Well, it, it, exactly. So the, and there's nothing that the applicant can do in terms of showing what the town is going to be in, obtaining from this, that, that's within the town's charters and regulations. And I believe they have a very specific formula for dividing this. And I won't claim to know how to run that formula.
I know that is in the sewer regulations.
Yeah.
Yeah, the formula is, yeah.
I, I don't personally know how to run the formula. I'm just saying that there's nothing that the applicant can do here in regard to that formula. So this, what we're seeking here is just merely approval for the tie-in.
And again, I have no problem with the connection. I, my notes were solely based off just a letter that was provided to me. I was just reading my packet and those are the questions that came up. I'm not opposing the.
For the applicant. So we were aware.
Well, it was to, it was addressed to the Coventry Town Council.
So just a little background on that memo, because council members in the past had asked.
The mics just.
Had asked in the past, you know, how much, how much can the town expect to see for this tie-in? So that's where it was for informational purposes. If, if all connections are to be made, that would be the total that she states in there. If, if there's less connections, then it'll be less of an assessment. But, but right now, the, the, the project is proposing 172 new connections. There are laterals. So there's, there's 200 homes right now in this, in this mobile park. And there is a sewer line that runs right down the middle of the park.
There's something in there that are already connected to.
Well, they're not connected, but they do have laterals. Right. There's 28 of those homes. Actually, I did receive four applications for four of those 28 to tie in. When the tie-in happens, that's, you know, that's when that assessment will be paid. So there's 172 new connections. The applicant, the engineer is proposing, it's an eight inch sewer line, an extension with two small pump stations on each side of the development to the east and to the west. It'll tie into the line, which ultimately goes down Morningside Drive into Ty Oak Avenue. I, I think, you know, I think it's great that 200 homes are getting off of OWTS. OWTS, it has, you know, definitely a health benefit to the, to the town. And also we're also increasing our sewer users and at the same time.
Again, I, I was not, I was not disagreeing with the connection. I was just, my notes based off the information that was reserved. I'll make a motion if we're ready for it. Unless you could.
Just, yeah, in, in general, I don't know how the rest of the, the members feel, but you know, very technical sewer tie-in questions. I get a little uncomfortable because I know we have a, a committee that usually looks at this. Is this something, if we, if we had the committee meeting now, would this still come to us in this way?
Basically, it would come with a recommendation by the sewers committee. So that's the only difference.
So the new guys there, we got, I don't know where we stand with the sewer committee where.
It's down like four members.
Okay. So, you know, this is one issue, but the bigger issue is, you know, I would personally much rather have a recommendation. No offense, obviously, but you know, from a full committee of, you know, at least somewhat experts as opposed to what we got going on here. So that's, that's a kind of bigger issue at play for me. You know, again, I know how, how much you guys do and all your work. I, of course, we're going to have to trust your expertise on that. But that's something we need to, to get a handle on is, is making some appointments to those. So I don't know what we have to do.
Well, I know Maria is rewriting that ordinance right now, and I believe one of her recommendations is to abolish it truthfully. Because the council has final say. And I think on the.
Final say.
On the, well, again, they make a recommendation to you, but it, I think you write, I think previously it had two council members and three members of the public. I don't know if there was any expertise needed.
Experts.
I don't, I don't know if they had any expertise in sewer or not on that. So, but that's the direction that Maria wants to take it, but obviously council has final say.
Hmm. No, it's, that's why I was trying to highlight the, the other issue. Vice President Brown.
I think this one's straightforward, the one in center in New England where there's another resolution. We're going to hire a third party to look at what we've been provided because it's a greater, bigger project.
That's correct.
I, I've worked with Joe over the years. I know who he is and does a great job. So I think this on Ramblewood's easy. Obviously the next one, center in New England, and you're looking to get somebody to verify the information that was provided to the town. In that case is a good idea. So I, I second the motion.
That he's got to make.
To move it. No, he already made it.
Did you make it? All right.
To move it.
All right. Thank you very much anymore. Actually, we'll, we'll hit it up again. Go for it.
Thank you for the clarification as well. I'll make a motion for, to approve resolution 2025-117, approving of the Ramblewood Estates sewer connection.
And I'll second.
Motion from Councilman Hall, second from Vice President Brown. Any more discussion? All right. Thank you all very much again for the information. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm, I'm up for the next one.
Again for the next one.
All right. Let's.
Before Mr. President, before Joe starts, just one correction to the resolution I want to make to the council is that if this gets approved, the $6,000, it's not going to be coming out of the town's revolving capital fund. It's going to be coming out of the sewer enterprise fund. So that's the one amendment and ask the council to make if it goes forward.
Thank you for that. And then you just made me think, do we have a statement of that fund kicking around somewhere? Or is that something we can get going?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So just a little tool for us if we're going to be getting in the flow of things with the sewers. Thank you. Go ahead, sir. Back to you.
So to give you a little background, Center of New England parcels two, three and four. We originally looked at tying in these parcels along with some other parcels in Center of New England, newly constructed parcels to the New London Turnpike Line. We had a capacity analysis performed of that line and there are capacity issues. Star Capital LLC, who is the developer for parcels two, three and four, had asked if they can go an alternate route, which would be down Hopkins Hill. And we did look at that and we didn't have an issue with it as long as technically it was a viable option. Star Capital LLC hired an engineer, VHB, to perform a capacity analysis of sending their flow down that line. According to their analysis, it does pencil out. But due to the, the amount of flow and the number of units, I would feel more comfortable with a peer review by our sewer expert, Fosun O'Neil. Fosun O'Neil is doing a lot of our sewer work in town, a lot of our engineering work. They're, they're the designer of the high school extension and they also prepared our sewer facilities plan. So they are well aware of Town of Coventry's, what our strong points are in the sewer system, what our weak points are. So I think they can hit the job, you know, hit, hit the ground running on this. You know, and prepare a turnaround, whether they have questions, recommendations, full approval. I don't know yet until they start looking at it, but they are going to start right away. And I'm hoping to get some feedback back to Star Capital ASAP. So we can, so we can get him going on his approvals and get this started.
Thank you very much. Before we do that, just a quick question. You were saying, do we need to amend that language since it says revolving capital fund?
Okay. Okay. Sorry.
Correct, solicitor, just amend the line to correct the, David, to correct the line?
Yeah.
Just to, just amend it?
The lead, probably capital fund and insert Town Sewer Enterprise.
Yep.
Okay. So I don't know if we want to do that before we move on. Did you have something, Vice President? All right. Go ahead. All right, go ahead. Yeah, no, do that first, yeah.
Joe, I know it says thirty days they get back. Um, this is kind of a bigger issue in town, and we need that answer sooner than later because it's tied to quite a few other things. Um, they can do it. I know I read it, and it said they might have it earlier, but that's
Yeah, so, yeah, I I need it no more than thirty days, but I'm hoping that they can turn it around quicker. I did send them an email this morning, uh, anticipating approval uh by tomorrow morning, and I can give them authorization to get started. Um, you know, I uh definitely uh weighed in on the importance of this and how quickly we move it. So uh hopefully they have the bandwidth to be able to turn it around quicker.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Just so the council knows too, that in uh speaking to Mr. Eden of Star Capital, uh, he paid for that VHB uh assessment um as opposed to the town paying for it, so.
No, in general, I mean, with this stuff, just like we were discussing, I mean, belts and suspenders, uh, this is, you know, something that we need to uh
No, I agree.
Double check, so I I appreciate your
This is a little different than the last one. Uh, Ramble one, I I have no concerns at all. This one, uh, due to the sheer size of the project and the uh the infrastructure, how the town has limited information on some of our existing infrastructure. That's why I I'm hoping to uh, you know, to get a professional to uh put eyes on it.
I appreciate you being thorough on that. Uh, if uh the council wishes, we can do a a motion for an amendment. Uh, and then we can get back on the resolution. Did you have questions?
No question. Just thank you for your due diligence.
You're welcome.
We have to recognize that.
Question, Councilman Dowen.
Uh, I think you kind of addressed it a little bit with saying that we don't understand the capacity issues, but I I was curious because Ramblewood, it sounds like we're approving, and we have an understanding of the capacity there. Sounds like you're questioning whether or not we have the capacity to put this in here, so we're gonna send, we're gonna spend six thousand dollars to find out. Or if, do we just not know at all, or do we think that we're maybe close to capacity, and this would take up all of the capacity on Hopkins Hill?
No, I I think, I I, according to their study, that they're uh, they're assuming, they, so they have, they they've based a lot of their um information on assumptions, so that that's where the the checks come in, is checking their assumptions. Um, we do, we do have a pretty good idea. We, you know, we know, we know the slopes of the line based on plans that we have. We know the sizes of the lines. We know what properties are tied in. Um, we have a a pretty good idea, um, but that does not, um, I I'm, I still want it looked at. I I I have a strong feeling that it'll be fine. Um, but I want to check the box that due diligence was performed just due to the size of this. I don't want any issues. I don't want a new home buyer to experience any problems, you know, after spending their life savings on a home. I I wanna double check that everything is gonna be fine with the connection. That that's all I'm asking for here. Um, as far as Ramblewood goes, it's an eighteen-inch line that goes through that property. There's more than enough capacity. I know what's coming down that line. Basically, it's Amgen, and it's um Pine Ridge is connected to that line. Um, so I have a good idea of what's connected there, so I have zero concerns with that.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? All right.
One more.
Oh, we got one more.
Just to clarify, the um, and Councilman Dowen, correct me if I'm wrong. I think some, it, they're two different lines running into two different places, which I think is where some of like the Ramblewood line we know is not a concern, because it's it's a different line that we're dealing with.
That's actually uh pretty newly constructed.
Yeah.
And uh uh Amgen funded that project.
Going through our lines is like the whole, that whole thing up there is a little tricky.
So actually, the line as it comes up, it's a force me and that comes up Hopkins. It actually takes a left into Pine Ridge now, and it bypasses, it goes all the way down Pine Ridge all the way out, and it ends up going through Ramblewood, that eighteen eighteen-inch line.
Okay.
Then it connects into another eighteen-inch line in Ty Oak. Um, so I have zero concerns with that, that route. Um, Hopkins Hill, it's a, it's older. Um, it's it's just uh, I want to verify that the anticipated flow that they're looking to send down that line is accurate. That's that's all. So, like I said, it goes back to, they had to take a, they had to use a lot of assumptions when they came up with their total flow. Uh, I'd like to just uh put a second set of eyes on that and verify that the assumptions are sound.
And the town manager mentioned that they are paying for that assessment. It just seems odd to me that that wouldn't be the normal course. They're the ones presenting the facts to say, we're tying in, this is the information that we need to provide you. We need to know it's true and accurate. Like, a business shouldn't just be able to say, I guess it's a hundred thousand gallons, so.
Yep. So we paid for an assessment for the New London Turnpike, because that project there was not just Star Capital, it was other p- parties that were going to tie into that, that was gonna cause a potential issue. So um, the town paid uh Fosun O'Neal to to do that study in particular. Um, but because this one is mainly for Star Capital, we kind of put the onus on them to pay for it.
Yeah. All right. We are back on the resolution. Uh, if we uh do feel that way, we can amend uh step one and then step two uh on the resolution, so pleasure the council.
I can make a motion to amend it. I just missed the verbiage of what uh the solicitor wanted us to add.
In the amendment, um, the, after the fir- line, um, twenty-six in your, in your resolution, the um, the words Town's Revolving Capital Fund should be stricken. And the words Town's Sewer Enterprise Fund should be inserted.
I'd like to make a motion for Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash one one eight to amend line twenty-six of that resolution to remove the verbiage that states Town's Revolving Capital Fund, and we are going to replace it with
Town's Sewer
The Town's Sewer Enterprise Fund.
Thank you very much. We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Any more discussion on this one? All right, this is just on the amendment. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, eyes have it. Motion carries. Back on the resolution.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one one eight, approving the Hopkins Hill Sewer Road Sewer Capacity Peer Review.
Motion from Councilman Hool.
A second.
Second from Councilwoman Capaldi. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. Resolution passes. Thank you very much. Are you staying up again?
I am.
All right.
All right, go ahead, Joe, with
So, yeah, so not to diminish the uh importance of this connection, this is very straightforward. It's a commercial property uh located at eleven eighty-four Main Street, uh, very low, uh, average daily flow. There's just two restrooms in the building, thirty gallons per day. Um, there'll be, right now, there's a sewer lateral existing that's tied into the main on Main Street. So the property owner will just be tying in his building to that sewer lateral. Um, it's a twelve-inch sewer line in Main Street with no known uh capacity issues. Um, that's, that's basically it. It's pretty straightforward. Sure.
One straightforward. Any questions for Joe? Councilman Hool?
Uh, Joe, on my notes, it's uh, there was some talk about a betterment assessment um in in the packet with this resolution. Can you just explain to me what would determine if a betterment assessment were to be necessary for that?
Sure, just uh one second. Let me
Yep.
Look at this.
And while you look, I'll keep going. I have a, I have a concern about the thirty gallons per day. Do we have a system in place if that building were to change use or that were to increase?
So I believe, I believe that's what she's getting at here. Um, she's saying that it was a karate studio
Correct.
Back when the original assessment.
Yep.
So it had a similar use.
Um, that's why I'm asking, like, what would determine
So probably something that would um require a lot more uh sewer flow. Uh, that that would be a a change. There would, there would be a
How would that trigger is what I'm curious.
Uh, during during the application process, they they would have to submit what the use is gonna be.
What, what application process?
During the sewer connection. You, oh, so you're talking about if
We're gonna, if
If it didn't change owners or if they didn't have a building permit.
If that guy sells tomorrow and decides it now turns into two hundred and thirty gallons per day, how are we monitoring that? That's a very low calculation for sewage.
So I'm not sure if the tax collector has the ability to flag uh anything where there's excessive consumption um compared to, say, last year's billing and now this year's. I don't know. I would, I would have to ask her, but that would be the only way you could catch it then, um, is to flag if there is a, you know, a a significant
Does the town have a system in place with, you know, like a an an, you know, automation where, you know, hey, the sewer, this sewer bill is, or this sewer usage? It's almost like you don't want someone to come in front of us and say, hey, I want a new sewer connection. It's only gonna be ten gallons, but realistically, I'm pumping three hundred.
There is a possibility. It it's based on water consumption. Um, so if she did notice that the water consumption is
So it's nothing automatic. It would have to be a physical review.
Right, right.
Oh.
Yeah. Uh, and that's the only way to catch it, other than them coming forward with a new permit, because then it gets reviewed again with what
Do we have Excel sheets? And no, not really. Probably not. Okay, so it just wouldn't be caught then. We're just assuming thirty gallons and
Right, right.
Go use two hundred and pay us for thirty?
I think there might be two separate things. Are you talking the usage versus the assessment? So the initial assessment
Well, in the same package, it states that there's a potential for a betterment assessment if it would be necessary.
Right, so I think if a new business were to go in there
That's what I'm asking. Like, how does that trigger?
Would go in there when they're getting a certificate of occupancy, that's when it would be reviewed, or as Joe said
Okay, so there is a process for that.
Right, that would be reviewed. As far as the ongoing usage, that's based on the annual water consumption. So we get the water reads from Kent County Water Authority or through West Wall.
So we're approving thirty gallons, but it doesn't really matter, because it's not up to us anyway. It's gonna be based on what they get for a bill. We're just giving an estimated number of what we think that line can fit, basically.
Right.
So it's almost just like, why don't we just take a number out instead of just giving us a number? Just it's useful. I don't know. It's just like, you you know, because thirty seems super low. It's the only reason why I even ask those questions.
Right, right. Yeah, there's just two bathrooms. There's no shower or anything. It's just a a sink and a toilet, so.
Perfect. That was it for me. Thank you. I just had a question there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Councilman Dowen.
Just to help with that line of questioning, at what point would we charge a betterment? Is it a hundred gallons? Is it five thousand gallons? Like, how close are we to that?
Right. Um, and then Do you have any?
I'll get that.
Yeah, that's the t- tax collector. Um, she prepares this memo that deals with the assessments. So uh, you know, we could, we could definitely get you a clarification on that.
Yeah, just not to put on anything nefarious here, but we are approving a connection for a completely unoccupied building per this. So I have questions the same line as you. If we're approving for thirty gallons now and it's unoccupied, why? Why are we doing it for thirty gallons now? What is the proposed use? Is this actually gonna be in use at this thirty gallons per day? Or are we getting it approved now so we can turn it around and sell it? And we already know there's a plan to put in a place that's going to reconfigure it and put in twelve dog showers, you know?
Right. It's, some of it may be, I I have two points. Some of it may be because it's on the water, so I'm assuming that there's gonna be some feasibility to not wanting a failed septic or a potential cesspool on that property.
So when the gentleman, the owner, uh, excuse me, when the, when the owner renovated the building, the septic had failed. So he uh, he took out the septic when he renovated the building.
Okay.
Uh, knowing that he could tie in, so now he's coming forward. Now that the building is done, he's looking to to get this final piece completed uh and tie in. But I I also, you know, I also questioned, you know, you only have two bathrooms in this building and and uh, and that that's what he says. But like you said, if he sells it, at least we'll be covered for the for the usage, because it goes by the water bill. Um, but as far as the assessment goes, um, those type of questions, I would have to clarify with the tax collector.
It's just, it's it's hard, and I I don't want to get frustrated, but this is not, and not to you, but this is now two resolutions back to back that we've needed a, the the tax collector, and we we don't have an answer, but you guys all want everything approved. It's like, stop putting stuff in front of us if it's not complete. It's so frustrating.
To that point, thank you. Um, to that point, I think we stated uh two meetings ago that people, the the subject matter experts, that this agenda needs has to stay for the whole meeting, so we have the answers in the room, so we can approve. I don't feel comfortable approving until we have that information.
But the the approvals for the sewer connection, it's not for the amount of money that the assessment is going to be. I mean, it's
Yeah, it it's, 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 it's two things. It, basically, her memo is for uh information, even though you do, you do have questions on it. The purpose of it is just for information only. Um, it doesn't, what you approve will not affect uh the assessment down the road. You're not uh doing anything out of turn that's gonna
Like Joe said, I think it was, that was for the previous council. If this council doesn't want, doesn't want Monique to supply that to you, we'll have her not supplying it.
No, I'm not saying that, because the information is knowledge. The problem is, information leads to questions. Questions don't get answered, and it's
If she's not here.
Confusing.
Yeah, so, you know.
Because the information doesn't say, like, Mr. Levesque said that the last one was for informational purposes only. That that's, that that's a verbiage I use in my daily job on a regular basis. It doesn't say that in here. So I'm not, I'm reading something that doesn't tell me it's for informational purposes only. So I take all my time and I write all my notes, and then I get, you guys say it's for informational purposes only. I'm like, that thirty minutes, I could have got back somewhere else.
But um, I I do ask that you do approve this, because the um property owner has been very patient. He's been going back and forth with Wes Warwick. Due to the uh commercial nature of the project, he also needed Wes Warwick approval, so there was a lot of back and forth. And he's, he's been waiting a while, and I I would hate to have to punish him uh for something that isn't clear, that kind of is separate than the connection.
One sec before Councilwoman Capaldi, uh, just, Marcus, I'm getting some, some texts here saying we're having trouble hearing. Is everything good as far as we can tell? Just uh use this as a reminder to make sure everyone's swallowing the mic. But uh, hold on one sec.
Does Marcus hear you?
Okay, for those uh, those out there, hopefully we we got this and and you can hear us, but uh, just give everyone a reminder to get in that mic good. Uh, Councilwoman Capaldi?
I still want to reiterate that when we need these subject matter experts in this room, they should stay here for any questions that any of my colleagues have, because that's why we're here, to ask the questions that our constituents want to hear, and we would like answers.
Monique wasn't here tonight. We we don't usually bring her to a sewer connection meeting, but we can in the future.
Well, if we know that there's questions that are going to be posed to her, she has the answers. Shouldn't she be here?
She should, but she's never been here in the past for sewer connection issues, so
Okay, that's past. I think we're new, we're fresh, and we it, we just want answers, you know, our questions answered. And if these gentlemen can't answer it, she should be in the room.
I I would just add, again, the sewer assessments, again, it's separate matter from here. The sewer assessments are gonna be assessed in accordance with the ordinance that this council approved or your predecessors approved. So there's a standard. If you go through the code of ordinances, you're gonna see the sewer assessments, how those fees are calculated. Um, again, she can certainly come to future meetings, but she wasn't here tonight. I think you're, you're referring to the tax assessor who was here and left. She has nothing in order to do with this.
That wasn't
When she was here and left. Well, she should stay for the whole meeting, so I'm just clarifying that it wasn't the
Okay, that's perfect. But anyone that, we have an agenda, everyone sees the agenda, people know that there could be questions for them, they should be in the room. Right? That makes sense? Do we all agree on that?
So if I can just add one thing. So your concern was, all right, what if the building is sold and a future business owner uh changes the use? So that would, that would require a business license, which in fact has a sewer component. Um, at that time, there would be a review of
We don't have business license.
Uh, ficturing license, uh, something like that. So um, I have, when Uh, ficturing license, uh, something like that. So um, I have, when there is a new sewer user, I do have an application which requires a uh uh property owner to submit that. So I I I would see what they're what they're doing there. If there is a a change of use or uh anything that deviates from what they're doing now.
Great. And and again, like I I think uh, oh, some of my questions are for information and I think people who are listening don't, you know, they see the agenda, but they don't know these discussions happen. And sometimes I don't know. Um, so my line of questioning, whether it be different or not different, it's questions that come up from the information that, you know, you guys all provide me. So thank you for the clarification. Again, I I'm not.
Yeah, I'm just.
I'm not against the connection. I was against the uh information that came with it. It was confusing.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you both. Similar to what I was saying before, I think we need a sewer one-on-one. Uh, you know, there's just this is a big topic in town. Obviously, it's our infrastructure. It affects development. It affects people. It's it's just a big topic. Um, you know, and I I don't wanna just come in and, you know, make approvals, understanding though that we are up against uh certain aspects of this where we'll rely on the the technical expertise, but, you know, we don't wanna shortchange ourselves and say yea or nay based on, you know, something, especially if something tickles you uh in the backup.
Municipality that, you know, has so many septics um and, you know, dealing with sewer connections. So, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else?
We good for our motion?
All right, we are on the resolution twenty twenty-five.
We did not make a motion to approve or deny resolution twenty twenty-five.
Right. No, we're just on it. Anybody got anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Or not.
Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five one nineteen.
Motion from Vice President Brown.
I'll second it.
Seconded. Councilwoman Capaldi, any more discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Yay.
Opposed? Okay, I have it. Motion carries. Thank you. Hmm. All right, um. Next item on the agenda E, uh, Mr. Town Manager. Where'd we land on that one?
Uh, to the solicitor, I'm assuming we're going to continue this till Friday because we don't have the correct information. Okay. I'll let David explain this one.
Thank you.
This consent agreement is consistent with the presentation we had with Matt McGowan um at the several meetings ago, um, consistent with the agreement and the previous consent agreement that's been installed with the Center of New England. But this was um specifically related to three aspects. One was the um fact that the town had granted Center of New England in the previous consent agreement many years ago, your predecessors, and access easement across town property along the landfill. Um, and for whatever reason, of the town had a fence built inside that easement which interferes with that easement. So one aspect of this consent agreement is the town's agreeing to move the fence at its own cost. That's one aspect of it. And the other aspect of it is that as part of the installation of the landfill, certain monitored devices were placed under the ground in the easement area. Again, um, or should I say, without considering the easement area. Um, and Center of New England wants us to agree that um those will be removed or ensure that they do not interfere with the easement when they build the infrastructure under the road. There's sewer and water lines under that road. So uh, this went before the judge on that, you know, to approve the consent agreement. And those are the two aspects of this consent agreement that apply to the town specifically. And uh, the language that, you know, we had to have a meeting with the engineers to confirm that there um that it could be, the fence could be moved um without interfering with the requirements of DEM and that the monitoring devices can be relocated or um in some way, you know, or 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 um or remain and not be in in the way. And those issues were unclear when we went before our court, so we met with them today. We could do that. Um, but the the consent agreement was making a representation and warranty that we would guarantee that there's none there. We couldn't do that. And we would guarantee um that they would never be there. We can't do that. We can, we can guarantee that we will use our best efforts, subject to DM approval, to relocate them or to make them um, you know, of um, either relocate them completely off the easement or to install, reinstall them in a way that doesn't interfere with the easement, subject to DM approval. That's like, I, that's fundamentally one. We made that proposed language. Um, we did not get a confirmation. So we're asking that this resolution get continued until uh Friday. So that those are the two major points for the town. There's a requirement that the town pay a hundred and eighty thousand dollars as a penalty for violating the consent agreement and installing the fence on the easement. But the operator of the solar farm has agreed to absorb that fee, as you recall, um, as part of consideration for the agreement with the town. So this is a three-party agreement. This is between us and the receiver and also us, the receiver, and the operator of the solar, the solar field above the landfill. Uh, so that's a three-party agreement that's has to be approved by the court. We approved it at the court. I made the court make it subject to us confirming those issues that I just described to you. I confirmed them today. The warranties and representations must reflect what I just described to you or we cannot in good faith sign this because we'd be in contempt of court, obviously. We'd be signing an agreement that we can't comply with, right? So um, we're waiting for confirmation. Mr. McGowan um did not respond. Uh, he was busy. Um, so I notified all parties that I would tell the council that this will get continued until Friday. Um, so that's the short version of this uh easement um language and the purpose of it. But you do recall, we had a discussion about this, not the the two new council people, but the previous council people. We had a discussion and we can uh talk more about that publicly offline, online about that whole Center of New England situation. I think I had a discussion with you, Councilman, about that. Um, but I'm happy to answer any questions about it. But this is just one little piece of the Center of New England issues. This is just one little piece. It's just so happens it involves the receiver as well as the operator of the solar farm because of the easement is is important to the receiver.
Uh, just to clarify on the the monitoring devices, is that as it relates to the landfill site as far as gases and?
And and our engineers have indicated that they are relatively simple uh types of devices. They're like they're 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 wells. They're they're pipe ten-foot pipes in the ground. They're there to to monitor methane gas. Uh, and they they even looked at the the results. It's no negative results uh in those pipes. But that doesn't, that's not the issue. The issue is either we can move them or we can't. And we and if we can't, we can't move them. I mean, that's the bottom line. But our experts indicate that they more likely not can be moved and the fence can be moved, but uh that we just couldn't agree that that we couldn't agree that there was nothing in the ground. They wanted us to agree that there was nothing in the ground. And we found out there is. There's three wells in the ground in the easement. That's the that's the long and the short of it. And as long as they change the language to reflect what's really there instead of what they want to be there, then we can sign it. Does that make sense?
Thank you very much, Councilman Downs. First.
I I don't think we have any experts up here, but uh the fence removal, I'm assuming that's just a chain link fence and we're just gonna incur some labor and destruction costs.
There's, I think there's nineteen posts and two gates. So there'll be some cost to the town, but the materials are there. It was just the labor to push it back off the easement.
We're not hiring somebody. We have somebody at town who can do that.
We haven't determined that yet. We we we're hoping that part of the new wording that we're looking for is that that does not have to happen until they supply plans to actually build a road. And we think that's several years off. So.
Okay.
We're not concerned at this time that that has to happen.
Thanks.
I would just add um, um, Mr. Manager, that the there will be, because of, again, the constraints of the location of the easement to the edge of the landfill that cannot be touched or disturbed, that they're they're talking about, we would need to um purchase two roll-away um fence openings, which would be more expensive than the existing fence because of the fire apparatus has to get into the landfill. So there has to, and there has to be a roll-away because it's so tight. You can't open up a fence in the middle of the access easement, which is gonna be a road. So it's gonna have to roll away if the fire apartment has to go there. That's what I, that's what was described to us today. So we got a handle on what needs to be done. The fence needs to be moved. These two new fences need to be, uh, these two new openings to be installed. We don't have a price, but that will be a town, a town responsibility as part of this consent agreement. Um, it's just a, it's just a deal. We put the fence in the easement and we promised not to do that in the original consent agreement. We have to move the fence.
Understood.
It sounds like they're asking to do something uh that that, you know, that's not our problem. It's our problem.
Gotcha. Uh, Council.
The last thing that I think anyone up here wants to do is slow down any progress happening at Center of New England. So my question for the solicitor, maybe the town manager is, could we make a motion to approve this resolution contingent upon Mr. McGowan's approval of your suggested language?
You you could do that.
Like, otherwise, we're waiting a whole, you know, not a whole week, but.
If if you're comfortable with the agreement, I just didn't want, you know, the council's very methodical, wants to do things. And normally you want, I'm telling you, the language, I can recite the language, but the language basically protects the council and the town.
You caught the language. I trust that you're the, you know what I mean, that you put us in the right spot. You. I didn't catch it. You did. You know what I mean? I read, I read their proposal, so.
The council feels comfortable um approving the resolution, subject to approval of myself and the town manager um and a satisfactory language that I proposed, that will, that will get us, that'll get us there.
Or hold off until Friday. So that's where we're at right now.
Can I make a motion?
Sure can.
I I am gonna make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash two-two-zero contingent upon Solicitor Igliosi's recommended verbiage change in the contract. Uh, which is it gonna approve the consent agreement with Matthew McGowan as a receiver of Commerce Park Realty LLC and the affiliated entities?
I'll second that motion.
We have, we have a first and a second. Any discussion on that motion?
I do have a quick question. So if um, obviously it's contingent upon that information. If for some reason it doesn't go the way that we expected to because we're approving it for that, uh, do we have to, will you say something in Friday? I mean, how do we get, as a council?
I'm gonna do Councilwoman because tomorrow um, tomorrow is Thursday. I would, it would, it wouldn't.
Wednesday.
Oh, then I could. I could still meet the deadline. I could put it on the agenda for Friday.
Okay.
So if he responds to me in the morning, uh, anytime before five o'clock, you know, meeting scheduled for five, anytime before five o'clock tomorrow, I can schedule it for Friday.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
But uh, if if the verbiage is not approved from Mr. McGowan, the motion that I made this evening would be null and void because my motion only carries pending the verbiage correction. So my thing is let's free up a little bit of Friday and focus on the CLA issue on Friday. And if this is only a verbiage change with Mr. Town Manager can approve it, Mr. Igliosi will review it that that and Center of New England can keep moving forwards.
I think the only, the only, not obstacle, is the only change would be that if Mr. McGowan counters with the different proposals that we have to bring back to the council.
Well, then it would be the same thing as if he if he denies it or counters it, it would be the same thing. But if not, he may be incentivized to keep this moving.
I agree. Yep.
All right, so we have a motion to give it a shot. Um, and a second. Any further discussion? Right? Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? I have it on the, was that on the full resolution though? Or was that just on the amended version? Okay.
That was the full.
All right.
If we could just ask uh Mr. Igliosi and Mr. Town Manager, Solicitor and Town Manager, if you could just send us an email once that is, so we know what's. Thank you both.
All right. Thank you all. Next, we are on public comment for undocketed items. Uh, anyone in the room would like to come up on undocketed items? Please come up and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, again, Scott Guthrie thirty-one Maplewood Drive, Maplewood Drive. I have to correct myself. Two weeks ago, I came up and and said that there was something that you guys need to look for, look, investigate, and that was um school committee terms. So I did a little bit of research this week and found that there was a computer mistake done by the state. So what you read when you go on the state laws, it requires four-year terms. Um. After speaking with someone up there, and I can't say who, we found out that Coventry was added to Central Falls, Wind Socket, um, Providence, uh, North Smithfield. So we are. So I was, I was asking for a couple of things to be done. But I still would like to find out um whether um the move that was made in two thousand and twenty-two to change the way that we um tax our citizens and govern ourselves. Um, back then, uh, we worked under the um, um, Financial Town Meeting. And the Charter Commission um that I chaired at the time, uh, we followed all the rules. Right? Constitutional, state, local. Um, an amendment was made to that um by the sitting council, former council president, that um moved things or her amendment was to make things um done by a we also added council members, there's seven. Welcome to you, the guys. Um, and what was written in her amendment was to make it a super majority of five out of seven, which effectually, you know, what it, what it would do, it would give the council the power to adopt a budget. However, um, the last sentence of Section Eight of the Constitution says that if it has to do with taxation, it has to go to a financial town meeting. So if it was done in that year, it means that it was sent to the ballot illegally. So I would just like to get it straightened out because it was kinda like a close vote. Um, I was surprised. I voted against it because I'm old school. Um, that was one of my other things. And then um, a couple of things came up tonight. It was talking about Station Street. Um, the the piece of land that goes from Station Street to Naughty Oak Road and between the soccer field and Highwood Drive, there's fifty acres in there. And back around two thousand and two or so, Dot Barubi, who was the councilwoman from District Two, had that um had a, had a resolution or a ordinance passed saying that that land wouldn't be touched for fifty years. On top of that land, because it's, it's the highest point, all right, that that is a spring. And so all the water that goes down to Station Street comes out of that spring. In two thousand and ten, so much water came out of that spring that it was four inches deep, washing out driveways on on Naughty Oak Road and doing severe damage to Station Street. And I can remember standing in my basement in four feet of water. And I can remember standing in my basement in four feet of water. Excuse me, four inches of water, looking up at water squirting up to my eyeballs because there was my, my house is effectively a boat. So that's how wet this area is. So, um, there's, there's not going to be a real easy solution to that problem. My solution would be to have Kent County Water go over there and take it over and make it an aquifer. But those were the couple of things that I wanted to say. Especially as it really, and I, and, and I'm sorry, John's not here. I wanted him to know that I did do the research and I did follow up on that. And I'm sure he's going to watch the meeting. I'll call him and let him know. But I wanted you all to know, and I'm glad that, that you recognize that. So, so you now know that I do my homework, right?
So thank you all.
Never in doubt. Thank you.
I know, I'm trying.
Good evening.
Hi, Brittany Boyer, three eighteen Town Farm Road. Um, I just have a couple of questions. When Mr. Angel bills the town for RDA related matters, who approves those invoices? The RDA approves them. Okay. Who gets to see them? The entire RDA? We don't know.
We, we, we received our.
There was one RDA bill for six.
We saw one.
That's all there was.
That was the only bill that was issued.
Are they redacted?
I can tell you in a minute.
On that one, we also saw the GZA bills, just so. That's what, yeah. That was the other thing that was in that lump. Yeah.
Okay. So that was really my question, um, you know, who approves them? Who gets to see them? Are they redacted? Because that was our issue when Mr. Angel was the solicitor here. I'm worried that we're just in the same boat with another department. And I'm concerned that the same thing is happening all over again. What do we do to stop that?
Councilwoman Cabaldi.
I think Town Manager said that they're coming in on the third, December third?
December second.
Second. As far as I'm, as far as I'm aware, nothing has changed in the way that the council works with them. And I do know that, um, for me, I want to change that. I don't know what legally we can do. I know we've had conversations here, there and everywhere. So hopefully we'll come down to something on the third, second, whatever it is.
We've only ever seen one invoice from Mr. Angel for the RDA.
And it was redacted. I'm looking at it now.
And it was redacted. So essentially we're in the same. We're in the same boat, just with a different committee. Nothing has changed in that realm. So if we are going to move forward with his.
I want to say one thing though, it's not a committee, it's, I, I really.
Agency group of people, I didn't mean that in.
Doesn't report to us, but don't we have oversight of it? So don't, aren't we able to state some of the things that we see that would be more beneficial to this town than how it's working right now? Or do they have say? If we have oversight, we should be able to trump them in what we think is appropriate business, correct?
Councilwoman, I will review the state law. It's a special, special, um, aid entity. But you do have a lot of authority over it. The extent and scope of that authority, I'd be happy to, to look into it. This has just been brought up tonight.
I think that'd be.
But it's driven by, it's not driven by your charter. It's not like a.
See, that's interesting because, and I don't mean to interrupt you, I'm sorry. The last meeting that we had discussing anything RDA related, Maria said we, uh, the, or the council had absolutely no say. Could not do anything in terms of the RDA.
That's what the former solicitor made us believe and would keep telling us.
Right.
So now we're here today and we're, we want, I want to change it.
I think the biggest concern is if we do not trust him in the aspect of being the town solicitor and working with the town, why do we still trust him?
I agree with you one hundred percent.
Hovering and redeveloping Johnson's pond, that it, I have no words for that.
But I do believe there are certain limitations in accordance with, um, the, the, how we attained the pond. Yeah.
So if we could at least have you look into that before the second and think and get some communication to us so we can have that info ahead of that, that would make sense.
And I just want to let you know that we just kind of learned that too. So.
Sure.
It is a process and I, I, I.
I've been doing my best to follow along in this realm. It just seems that every channel I go to has almost a different answer, you know?
We will get you that, yeah, we want that answer. So you'll get it when we get it.
I appreciate that.
I, I think the way that was designed, the way it was set up was.
Strategic?
And almost bulletproof, right? So it's almost kind of, and because they're sort of a quasi-public agency and we have to respect their authority, um, for what it was designed to do. While also, I guess, you know, because I had just asked, uh, the solicitor about us as council members, speaking in front of boards who we appoint. Right? There's a planning board coming up and I wanted to speak. So there was concern about, um, us directing RDA into doing what we want versus like kind of a workshop of, you know, our vision, I guess, is what we could call it. But it, you, you nailed it. It's like he, it bulletproof.
Very strategically.
Oh, it was.
In his, in his letter, um, that was made public when he wanted to, you know, dissociate from us. He made it very clear that he did not want to be a part of this, if this is how people felt. Yet he still has no problems cashing the checks.
Well, I don't think he meant RDA in this.
I also want to state how, what he said to us and how we behaved with them. Don't forget, he was saying the same, he was saying something to them.
Right. Correct. Yeah. No, I.
So it's all, yeah.
It was, it was well played.
Well played.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in chambers? Anyone? Anyone at all? Oh. Mr. Guthrie.
That was one of the things I was going to talk about tonight. When the new council was put in a few years ago, he pretty much bullshitted you guys into doing what he thought was the right thing. I'm sorry I have to use those words. They're, they're a little more tame than some of the words that he used in this building. So he did the same thing with the RDA. He created that to be his own entity. He didn't want the town to have anything to do with it. Nothing. And when you talk about the charter, yes, it's in the charter. The town council has control over every, every division. I, I was in here two weeks ago and I brought it up. And I emphasized the word agency. And I made the suggestion that the town council move the RDA to the planning commission. Because planning has the power to do everything, including, you know, public recreation, which is what this is all about. So, um, uh, my discussions with Mr. Angel haven't been, you know, the most pleasant. I'm sure he doesn't like me. I couldn't care less about him. He came in here and thought that he was gonna be a king. And he's not. He's going to go out as being a prisoner. That's how I feel about this deeply. I mean, really, really deeply. I'm sorry, you know, that things had to happen the way that they had in this town. I was pretty vocal about it and passionate about it, passionate about it because this is my town, not his. So we have a new council and a council that I believe in and I trust in. And this is what every person in this town should feel. The two and a half years or three years that we went through hell are over. And now we're going to make things right. So I also, I was curious about, uh, this investigation that we're going to hire someone for, to investigate him. Uh, I still believe it should have been fully and wholly done by the state police for no cost. Because that's their job. So whether this runs into that, I don't know. Uh, uh, I'm just hopeful that, that this exercise that, um, that was, you know, thrust upon us and has this whole town divided. You know, we have people that don't like people on the pond and people on, on the pond feel differently and this and that. Now we're a community and I have friends on the pond. I don't use it that often. I go fishing once in a while. And everybody in town has the opportunity to do it. But separating a town is, is not going to work well. It didn't work well for West Warwick, uh, when they separated from Warwick in nineteen thirteen. But they managed to get themselves back on high ground. So let's not let ourselves separate into two, you know, divisions of a town. Let's stay on the same level and let's, you know, let's work together and make sure that, you know, we can all, um, enjoy our time here, you know, and thrive and have a good community. It's not a hard thing to do and I'll talk to you after the meeting.
Thank you very much, Mr. Guthrie. Anyone else in chambers? If I go to Zoom? Bless you. And we will go to Zoom. I think I see a hand. Come on in, come off mute and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Kathy Thoreau, Helen Avenue. I was wondering, um, the topic was brought up on the October twenty-eighth meeting about the issues between two, two, five Hopkins Hill Road and the residents on Helen Avenue with the buffer. And actually, there was actually six clauses in the, um, uh, litigation, uh, that need to be, the owner of two, two, five Hopkins Hill Road needs to be compliant with. But the one issue that take, took priority was the buffer. What is, or is there an update on the buffer? And who is handling that?
So I spoke to the new owner of the property, actually yesterday, he got back to me yesterday. And he is aware of the concerns of the neighbors. He told me he actually met with a couple of neighbors already. He was advised by his attorney that he's not subject to that, uh, Superior Court order. But does want to be neighborly, wants to work with the neighbors, um, and is looking forward to have a foofu relationship, uh, at that location. So I kind of left it up to him. I told him that I'd reach out and kind of be the mediator if he wanted to put the two parties together. And he said that he would handle that on his own, um, and that he would in due time, uh, make his property, uh, sufficient for his purposes while also, uh, helping the neighbors attain the, uh, the privacy and so forth that they're looking for. So that's kind of the update that I have.
I appreciate that. However, that sounds a little respectfully, that sounds a little too lackadaisical. I'm talking about what was handed down after going to Superior Court in a decision. And the owner of that property needs to be compliant with six, six issues. And the one issue was the buffer. So foofu conversations and him deciding to get together with some of the people on Helen Avenue. This is an actual litigation that was handled by the courts with the town of Coventry. And at the time, Dan Ferrara. Again, with due respect, uh, Mr. Perillo, you tried to handle that for the three years that I believe you've been with us and you got nowhere. There was never a buffer put back. The people before you never had the buffer put back. Now you're going back ten years. And I don't think that this is something that should be left to the neighbors in the residential area, zone property and a commercial company in a zoned residential property. I, I, I think it needs to be handled by the town. That's why I went to the town council with this because it wasn't being handled by the town manager. If that was who was supposed to be handling it. I know it went to Durfee's desk. I know it went to other people's desks at the time. Um, I know the last town solicitor before Angel was deeply involved with it. He couldn't get the issue resolved. So now to think that it's going to be left to a new owner of the property to handle the situation, I don't think that's fair to us anymore. I think we've been nice. We've been patient. We've lost the use of our backyards for years and we still do. It went to court. The town paid money for this to go to court. Uh, we were heavily involved with the town asking us and we did our due diligence with, uh, zone, uh, drone videos, taking pictures daily, sending them to the town. We did everything that we could that the town asked and now it's just not being handled by the town?
So I know, so I know in two thousand and nineteen, the, the town did go to court on your behalf regarding the usage. And the Superior Court judge said it is allowed non-conforming use, I think since two thousand and seven. So the business is legally there. He did put those stipulations in place against Mr. Ferrara. The previous solicitor said that once Mr. Ferrara sold the property to the new owner, that that order did not carry along with the change in ownership. And the present owner's attorney also believes that is the case. So I can have Mr. Iglesias.
Excuse me, the town should have handled it before this. So you can't put the weight of it on, the property was sold and now there's a new owner and their lawyer and this other lawyer is saying, well, it doesn't go, it doesn't, it doesn't run with the, the new owner. And where, where's the town of Coventry in this? They should have resolved this a long time ago. They, they just basically hung all this out to dry and now, now we're at the point of, well.
I was, I was working with Mr.
Doesn't go with them.
I was working with Mr. Ferreira the last two years. He did plant those thirty-two four-foot abreviades along the property line. I also advised him not to cut it back, any of the brush to let it grow back naturally. So there has been some improvement from the total clearing that occurred. But obviously without any pictures of what the prior vegetative state looked like between the twenty and fifty foot buffer, we're kind of guessing as to what's there. And I know the buffer is intended to, uh, stop some of the noise and some, some privacy issues. And the owner does, did tell me that he does, does want to secure his property better. And whatever that entails is going to be some additions to that buffer. But again, he's not held to doing that legally. It's going to be based on his business model moving forward for the property that he purchased in January.
You're putting more of an emphasis, emphasis on what he's telling you he's going to do rather than with the residents who've lived here paying taxes on Helen Avenue and what we've had to put up with. That's what I hear. That's the, my interpretation of what you're saying. And yes, in the drone images and pictures previous, going back before twenty eighteen, there are pictures of what a lot of the area looked like before this buffer was demolished. So there's one thing of where someone demolished a buffer and, and it's going through the legal system of being replaced because you can't do that. That's illegal to tear down a natural buffer. And what are the town, what are the town ordinances on? What did, what does the town say a buffer should be before, between a? a buffer should be before, between a commercial and a residential property? There's, there's two avenues to take. But, and, and if you wanna talk about what, nobody knows what the buffer looked like before it was torn down. I'm here to tell you that I couldn't see what was in back of my house. Because there was years and years and years and years and trees and bushes and, and plants and, and so much vegetation that was probably grown for 50 years, if not more. Nobody going down this whole street could see or hear what was going in the back. That's how, how dense the buffer was. But even if you wanna put all that aside, the court wrote, and it says what it wrote, that there should, what the buffer should contain when it is restored. So even if we don't have one picture, which we do, the court also said what they wanna see restored. You can't, you can't have a business and have a residential butt each other and not have some type of ordinance in the town what a buffer should be, never mind what was actually torn down. And I, I believe that the town dropped the ball on this for years, for years. We waited and invested our time and our hopes and our prayers in the Town of Coventry to handle this. We actually became obnoxious, I'm sure, to many offices in the town because we kept calling and sending in pictures and texts and emails and drone images. And we went to Jim Hummel. It was on TV, it was in the Pro Joe. Where is the town? Somebody in the town has to come forward and deal with this.
Yeah, Councilman Hall.
I, I remember this conversation a few meetings ago. And one of the questions that I have is how can the property, if, if we have a Superior Court order, that order doesn't run with the property, that order runs with the owner? Because if, if that business can be, we're gonna use quotes, grandfathered in for usage upon sale, well then that property should have to comply with the court order or our town ordinances when it was sold as well. This to me sounds like it's another Cheryl Kane case. It's like, can we just solve some of these? If we have a commercial property that has a consent decree from court that states that there's a buffer, how is that gentleman operating without the buffer being in? Even if we don't have a previous idea of how big that buffer is, we don't have ordinances in town that dictate what that buffer looks like?
Thank you, that's what I'm trying to say.
I don't know what the current ordinances are and I'm not an attorney, obviously. But the usage of that property has been that way since, I think, 2007.
Which is fine, we read that and we're, no one's disagreeing with that. But if he's allowed to use the property as a new owner from what happened in 2007, well, look, if, if you buy a commercial property and you don't do a phase two and you buy contaminated soil, well, the soil is yours now. So the buffer issue is that property owner's issue now. Not, not the, I'm talking about the commercial business owner. He should have to comply. What do you mean? He has the option to say, I'll make nice. No, as, as a business in town, it's your job to follow the ordinances.
So again, according to the former solicitor and his attorney, the previous Superior Court order on the previous owner does not carry to him.
But we went to court as a town and spent taxpayer money to go after a business.
Correct.
And that money was basically, we could have just thrown it outside and given it away because we got no results from it.
No, we went, we went on behalf of the neighbors to try to.
But we spent town money, correct?
Correct.
And there was no, we got the, we got an answer from the, from the courts.
Yep.
But that's it. We just stopped there. We didn't follow through with that. So now if we wanna start this all over again, we're now spending more money all over again to go after the new owner. And he could sell to his cousin and then it starts all over again. And then his cousin sells to his uncle and it starts, but the entire time, they're able to use this property as they've been using since '07 because it's grandfathered in. How can they get the left hand but not have to deal with the right hand?
Again, it's probably a legal question that I'm not, I can't answer.
I just want our ordinances and our zoning and our planning and those departments to like handle this stuff. Because here we have a resident as a last resort comes before the council. If we don't help her, what is she supposed to do? This is where they come.
So I, I was helping them with the previous owner who the decree was against. And again, he did.
Understood, but that guy's out of the picture now. So that's null and void. I'm just wondering, moving forward, how can we help this young lady?
That's what I don't, legally, I don't know.
Yeah, it sounds like at this point, this is gonna be a, a question. Yeah, no. Now, we, we gotta pack it. We can start you off with, I think, a couple of weeks ago at least, but we'll.
From a legal perspective, zoning needs to go there. If there's a violation, the issue of violation, if the violation is, is filed, it goes to municipal court and proceeds to that process.
We've already done that.
Well, Councilman, you're asking me, you're asking me to give you an answer?
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm not asking for any solid answer. What I'm, what I'm, what I'm looking for is to move, I don't want this lady to hang up on this Zoom call and then us all just forget about this. And now she's left to impede on how she's living because some business gets to take advantage of a grandfathered rights but doesn't have to maintain the property.
I have a question.
And again, I'm not throwing anyone under the bus. I just want this lady's problem resolved. That's why she's here.
One at a time, Councilwoman Capaldi.
Not knowing the specifics of this case, obviously, but in general terms, if a town goes to Superior Court and gets awarded, you know, this is what, it's gonna happen now and that property owner is supposed to follow that stuff. That doesn't stay with the property? It keeps the revolving door every time a new owner comes on and the.
There is, there is legal ways to do that. The, what I'm hearing, without seeing anything.
I know, you haven't seen it, I know you don't.
With respect, this is not the way to discuss legal issues, but without seeing anything, there are ways to do it. I'm hearing that that method would. And but.
It's not a criticism of what was done, it's just.
Well, it's, it sounds like it should be a criticism for what was done because.
So the former solicitor said that that.
Are you speaking about Angel or somebody before?
No, Solicitor Angel. Said that if the, if the consent order was part of the filing when they changed ownership, then it would carry with the property. But because it was not part of the documents that are in land evidence currently, it does not continue with the property. That's what he advised me of and that's why, what I advised Mr. Theroux of. And, and the town lost that, that court case. But the resolution was that the owner is still, even though the, the owner of that property won, Mr. Ferrara won, he was still tasked with those six propositions of no trucks in front, only so many vehicles in the parking lot, replace the buffer, there were like six conditions.
I'm not gonna solve any of this here tonight. And I respect the solicitor's opinion. This is not a great way to, to conduct the legal issue. But I would like to get us in a, a meeting with the owner, Ms. Theroux, whoever else. You know, we definitely need to dig into this like Councilman Hall was mentioning. We don't need to continue, you know, not helping. We gotta at least see this through in some capacity. So I think for tonight's purposes, Mrs. Theroux, we appreciate it. Again, I completely understand your frustration as what we said earlier tonight. Sometimes this government stuff is very unsatisfying. And, you know, I think we, we have a duty here to continue to, to, to dig into this one. Let me put our heads together with town manager and the solicitor. And we obviously have your information on file. I'd like to set something up, you know, sooner rather than later. I don't know how it best works, but we're gonna be in touch.
Okay, great. That's, that's fantastic.
That's all we can promise you now. There's a lot to catch up on for our solicitor friend. I know you submitted a, a ton of information, so that'll be a good spot for him to dig in, but we, we hear you.
Yep, yep, great, thank you. I look forward to hearing from you all. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
All right, anyone else on Zoom?
Hello?
Yep, please come on in, state your name and address for the record.
Yes, hello, my name is Cheryl, 185 Reed Schoolhouse Road. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, um, the reason why I'm calling is I just heard the woman on the phone. And as you know, I don't know how that business was ever allowed off of Helen Avenue area, between Helen and Clark Mill. There is a customary home occupation ordinance pertains to all businesses and residential areas. That property is a residential area that contains about 5.6 acres of land. It also had to have a variance. The abutting properties are 90 square feet frontage, where this property has 49 square feet frontage. So I believe that it had to go before zoning on board for a variance. There is about 20 properties at least that bought of this property that are all affected by these businesses. And as I was younger, I grew up in the Hopkins Hill area and I walked around that area many, many times and you did not see any type of business over there. I think there was a place called Sandberg. I think you did a little bit of maybe sand blasting, but I don't remember. There was all woods there, you could not see. Also, a friend of mine lived up on the top of Clark Mill, right there on the right-hand side, which I think maybe this gentleman now owns part of it. And she lived there and I could not see a business at all. So as I said, I don't understand why these people had to go through this right from the get-go. Zoning should have closed that business down right from the beginning. It should have never been allowed in that residential area, that type of business that's there now. So I really, please, but please help these people. They've, they've been going through since 2016, that's just crazy. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Councilwoman Capaldi?
Cheryl, um.
Yes.
You haven't put the agenda out yet, but stay tuned for the special meeting on Friday.
Oh, this Friday?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much.
Do we see any more hands on Zoom? All right. Oh, we do have one more. Please come on in, state your name and address for the record.
Jerry Narkowitz, 21 Beach Street, Coventry, Rhode Island. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Good evening. I am the president of the Coventry Conservation Commission. I'll refer to it as CCC. This is very short. We have a question for you to consider as the town council. Last year, 2025, the lakes, ponds, reservoirs were treated. Those lakes include Johnson's Pond, Lake Ty Oak, Upper Dam Pond, Middle Dam Pond. The result of that treatment, at least my knowledge of Lake Ty Oak, was significant. We had a great reduction in weeds until very late in the summer. And we're wondering, and we've been looking into seeing if the town council would consider establishing a fund to be used in up and coming years. The, the, the problem with the weeds is that it, it crowds out a lot of the native vegetation, native fish, and it does present a problem. We have contacted the company that did the treatment for, I believe, all of the lakes. And we're looking in to see if we can determine a fair and equitable distribution if approved in the budget. I only bring this up for informational purposes as we're proceeding with it as we go. I'm not sure if any of you have questions about it. I know there's new council people and you may not be familiar with what occurred last year. So I'm here to answer questions if you have any.
We definitely appreciate you saying that, Mr. Narkowitz. I, I know we would, we've got some people here who would love to ask you some questions. We'll also reach back out to you. There's some other initiatives going on at the state level. Would probably be interested in connecting you with as well. But for the time being, we'll, we'll, we'll give you, if that's all right, give you our contact info to our new members. And we'll, we'll make sure we get coordinated on that. I know you had a wealth of knowledge. Councilwoman Capaldi?
Hi, Jerry. I remember last year, it was like every pond commission spoke about the weed issues, correct? Am I kinda?
I don't, I don't know if I would say every pond, but at least Ty Oak, Johnson's Pond and.
If somebody, if somebody can find that date, it would be great for the new councilman to wa. I'm assuming it was aired, right? It wasn't a special meeting. Yeah, if some, if you can get that date over to the new councilman, I think that'd be great. Or the clerk, if you can find that date and give it to the new councilman, just because it's a lot. I remember it was a lot, especially if you're not a pond person. You learn a lot about what the issues are and, and then at least that'll jumpstart them with any questions that they may have for you.
Sure, I can try to look that up. I'm not as good at that kind of thing as some people. I think Tom Pendergast is a really good, he, he's really good at that stuff. And I'll reach out to Tom and see if he will help me to determine the dates of that to help District Four and Five. And actually, everybody else, probably it wouldn't hurt for them to relearn that information because it goes out of your head from one year to the next.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you. And as is tradition, we'll also have our new members jump in Breezy Lake. That is something we definitely have to do. Everybody did it, everybody did it, yep. Thank you very much, Jerry.
You're welcome. Have a wonderful night, guys.
You too.
See ya. Bye.
All right, is that it for Zoom, Mr. Marcus? All right, thank you, sir. We are back on the agenda. We have some new matters before the council. We're on item seven. Looks like we're just looking at the town council calendar. Looks like we've got the holidays and the draft schedule included in our packets tonight. Everyone, please take a look at that. I don't know, Mr. Manager, if you had any comments on that or?
My only comment is I think the September 8th is a primary day. If you wanna have a primary, I don't know. Someone else brought that up earlier today. I know usually we don't have primaries, but in case we do, I'm not sure if we wanna have a meeting that, that day. But we have time to make that change if we have to.
Understood, good point. Anybody on this topic? All right, everyone's dance card is open. All right, that's it for that. All we have left is. That's what I was asking, okay. So we'll approve it now, but obviously if we're gonna make changes, we'll make changes. Do we have a motion? I'll entertain a motion in a second from the council.
I'll take a motion, I'll make a motion to approve the town council calendar for regularly scheduled meeting dates and times for the 2026 holidays and draft town council schedule.
And I will second that.
Wow, it's all right, we'll, we'll get them next time. We have a motion in a second, all those in favor. Oh, I'm sorry, any discussion? Sorry. Okay, I blew it. All right, eyes have it on that one. Motion passes. I think we're ready to adjourn. We will adjourn at 8:27. All those in favor? We stand adjourned.